Hold on the order. We'll open the floor up to, oh, sorry, goodie roll call real quick.
McBray, yeah, Mackey.
There.
Harper, here, Baxter, yes, Bassett, here, thank you.
We'll open the floor at the public comment.
Goodie marijuana, Kevin Neaton, Mayor of City Buckslings. I say how he, um, little update recently. Got to be see administrator hired. Start date currently is April third. So putting this stuff going and. Yeah, we're not any complaints about Joe or.
They probably on the spot.
Thanks, Joe. That's all.
All right, thank you. Who else?
Hi, Dana, hold up, we're here in Cambridge. Uh, two things, one, I'd like to get on the agenda for the next meeting. To get resolved on property line issue or however resolve that.
Okay.
And then one, I know last week we had a little discussion on it, it's just discussion, but, uh. Prior administrations, whenever I've been in here. You know, I was under the understanding paying for the survey and that city was gonna work with. I didn't know I was gonna get charged market value for the ground, which. I'm not okay with because I think there's been precedent set prior. Where there's issues with city property that the city has given up and they've sold it for a dollar or even had. Then pay the filing fee or the survey fees, which I also said that I would do anyway. One other thing is, is on the purpose ground behind me, I know the city said that you guys traded property. Which I understand the street is there, but I was probably under the assumption that street was probably owned by the city in first place. But anyway, the county gave their piece of ground to Purvis and I. Put some paper, we had to clerk put some paperwork in your guys' packet, it was just basically, that's all it is, is the information from that showing that there was no charge from the ground, either from the county or the city. He paid the survey fee and whatever the filing fees to the county, because. The county, when I talked to them, they were just happy to get that ground that they weren't getting any revenue, tax revenue off of, getting revenue collecting off of that.
Okay. We'll put you on agenda for next month then.
And that would be the second Monday, is that right, what day is that? March 13th, March 13th.
Thank you. There any other public comments? All right, those are public comments, we have a presentation. Joel, yes, that's correct, and my last name is I B A R R A.
I'm me in.
I B A R R A, just two R's instead of the N there. Sorry about that, don't worry. And I had something just, little PDF, I don't know if I can. But swap over.
Yeah, the H B M I port.
Uh, yes, I.
Yeah, um, you just swap it out, yeah. You can move that laptop off the chair if you want.
Well, it's just come to the three slide, but. My name is Joel Barra, my company, Winaka Properties, bought the school that was here for sale a few months ago. And we're in the process of, uh, doing some updates and, um, have also been, um. Working with, uh, a gentleman that's gonna help us submit a grant to see if we can qualify for just additional funding, there's a lot of. Lot of remodels that, uh, I guess, uh, repairs that have been postponed for years, probably are familiar with that school, but, um. We've been buying rental property and fixing and renting, uh, over the last four years now. And I'm originally graduated from Iowa State Civil Engineering, so I have design experience as well and, uh. We wanna make the school, uh, safe, uh, comfortable living space for, for anyone and, uh. Sure, you have a couple pictures of some of our property and they wish they had. More to share, but Marshalltown is where we started as mental town. And, um, just kind of what we, I guess, what our motto has been is, uh, if we wouldn't live in it, we wouldn't rent it out. Um, so these are some of the ones in Marshalltown, it's just a mix of. The properties that we've, we've repaired, uh, over the last two, three years. This is currently one of the latest ones that we've updated here in Cambridge that is, uh, up for lease, right now, we just finished installing, uh. A new toilet and some new stuff in the kitchen, so this one's gonna be up on our, on our website as available here as a. I guess here in the next couple of days. And then our overall vision would be to, uh, just have something like this, our agents that we've worked with over the last couple of years. Found a school somewhere in the States. And we've been kind of modern modeling some of these interior finishes. And a lot of the big windows, thirteen, fourteen foot ceilings are also the same in our situation, so it's allowing us to be converting, which is what we finished, uh, here this week on a separate unit. Um, this, the school has had radiant heating for as long as it's been a, uh, an apartment since two thousand or so. And we just installed the first, uh, forced air heat because it was, it was. We were here on, uh, December twenty fifth for a broken night because of the, uh, the heat issues. So we're, we're excited to keep moving along, but I know we're gonna need some help with, uh, for the grant, they, uh. They're gonna eventually ask for a couple letters of recommendation, letters of support, and we're hoping we can, we can get a feel from some of the folks here, um. But yeah, I can, I wish I had business cards, but we recently updated our, our information and I'll just put it on the next slide. Um, but, uh, we, uh. Have the property in Marshalltown that we're using on their home base now for, for an office. And, um, yeah, hopefully it'll be seeing a little bit more from us here, um, over the next couple of years, especially here over the next couple of weeks, just. Updating the school, the gymnasium, we had an idea and, um. We've just been kind of pointing or looking, talking to different folks of what, what might work for the community, so we're, we're open to discussions, but. One, one idea was a photographer in Des Moines has been looking for a big open space. Uh, that's one option, we still need that, but now a couple of days so we can show it to him. Then another one would be something, uh, like little distribution area, that seems like it's easy access to thirty five. Um, and then just the third one would be the, uh, just conversion to more apartments, but that would depend on the grant. Um, results that are gonna be, do, it's doing, uh, April and the results are red in July, in July. Any questions? How many apartments are you planning on and then like how many bedrooms? So right now, it currently has ten, four are rented, and it's a mix of, uh, three bedrooms. One bath or two bedroom, one bath, and there's only one studio and one, one bedroom. Um, just getting, going back to some damage that it, uh, got over the, either tornado or derecho. It was never updated, so there's currently. Five vacant apartments, so we're just working our way through updating, uh, some of them are a little bit major repairs compared to others. But, um, our hope is to have. All of these existing ten done within the next three to five months, three to six months or so, um. And then again, the gymnasium, just from some, uh, modeling that I did, it could house potentially twelve, but it would require a significant amount of investment. Um, so for now, we, uh, we're just gonna be focused seeing on the existing ten. Potentially, there is a space for a potential three additional, uh, units in the, in what it was currently the basement, of course. Um, that connects to the gymnasium, it's on that lower level. So it could potentially go up to about thirteen, fourteen apartment building just as is without using the gymnasium. I know the, a couple of weeks ago, I met with this, uh, fire marshal, gentleman Andrew from Buckslings, I believe, or City of, uh, A that. Can't remember where he was from, and he just came through, walked the building, make sure. We had a, as much as up to code as possible, and the only thing he mentioned was that if we went up to over sixteen, it would require additional sprinkler system. For now, that our intent is to keep the existing building under sixteen, unless, of course, we got, uh, funding for, for the gymnasium.
So would you maintain ownership after you renovated?
That, yes, that is our, our idea, is maintain ownership and depending on how things go, we're working with, we, we work with multiple different veins and. Thing that, um, we went with for the purchase of this property. Um, we mentioned the available, uh, land around it, and they were asking if we'd be interested in doing a, uh. Construction on, on a multifamily, if that was the need, or, or single family homes or something that sort of, that they would be interested in also being. Being the financing authority in the league, and so that's, that's kind of our, what we're doing now is what we're calling like a phase one. The phase two would be, uh, to, to either completely finish all of the, like, existing units and adding the third. Or the, the additional three, and then a phase three, which is for later this year, would be to look into. Either the gymnasium or just a new building onsite is for, those three phases, just to keep moving forward. Any other questions? Right, um, safety was also a great priority right away, so. Uh, you can't really see here, but in the hallways, uh, before we took ownership, it was. Pretty much open for anybody and the unit specifically did have their own lots, but we've been working, I think we're down to one door. Where it'll be just key to access for the, for the, for the current tenants, and then, uh, fire marshal and police would have all, all the contacts and codes to kind of override for any.
So what do you plan to do for parking?
For parking, so after I graduated and, and designed for a couple of years, I moved to, uh, construction, um. Concrete construction, commercial concrete, so our intent, I wish I would have had an aerial picture, you can see it over here, our intent is just to redo the existing. Two sides, which is the south side and west side, redo the, the, what the tenants already used to park in anyway, it's off street. Just removing what seems to be a mix of. Gravel and asphalt, broken asphalt, um, we wanna redo the, the entrance, the two main entrances to the building, redo the sidewalks that are sloping and breaking. And then also just redo the, it's about ten parking stalls. Um, maybe a total of fifteen or so on the other side, maybe eight and eight, just cut new concrete with the ability to. Have an area where for move in and move out reasons, you can pull in and you haul pretty close to. To the doors there. And just cleaning it up, my father-in-law cuts tree for a living, so as soon as he saw the trees, he was like, just let it, let it warm up, and I'll be out there cutting all those trees out and planting some new ones. We had, we love the high ceilings, they, for instance, this particular one, it allows for a little loft area of just storage, it's carpeted. Uh, up on top, so we can use it for storage, and then the other units is a lot, it's, uh, allowed us, that particular one that we put in the furnace. We kept an area for additional storage, but also that's where the, um, HVAC company installed, uh. The forced air, which is way more efficient than the ground or the, the radiant heating.
Or, or you add on the list of, uh, the stuff that the fire marshal about.
So we have, uh, some quotes for the, the doors. I guess we're waiting on the post, um, Walsh doors came by and they, they're supposed to be doing just the, an estimate for, for repairing the door, the doors. Well, the one door that was the concern is one that we, we wanted to be, our first priorities were, uh, being safe and keeping heat in. So what, what we ended up doing, uh, without really knowing, um. I guess the, the codes here too, too much, but for temporary, um, keeping the heat in, we, we, um, sealed one of the doors that was only used by one tenant. When the fire marshal just brought up our attentions, that they, everybody needs two points of access, two points of exit. So that only one out of the ten units was, uh, impacted. So we, we're gonna open up that, that door and they now will have the two doors, the access and, um, entrance and exit. But, uh, aside from that, he, he gave us a toll, may be roll just to have, um. Spiral alarms that were BP, just replace batteries, update the fire extinguishers. And install the ones that were needed, uh, I think he gave us the code where it's no more than seventy feet, sixty feet within hallways and one in every unit. Uh, which we have for the most part, just the empty units are the ones that need it. The chair.
Uh, the contact information we put up there, is that for emergencies too, or do you have another number that would call if we had an emergency that we need to contact?
Yeah, I could provide my cell phone, my direct cell phone, but that number we have, uh. The way that the system works is that we have right now three people that, as soon as that phone number gets a phone call or a message, up to three people right now. Uh, will get the phone call and, um, we will answer ninety nine percent of the time, no matter what time it is, but I can provide a.
That's my business card, it has an email on it, uh, if you want to share that information with me, and then you put the. Codes and stuff like that, you can send me that information, like, sure, other officers and this. Yeah, you want, you know that, we get that.
Yeah, thank you. And then just real quick, I remember lighting, whenever we do come at night, we realize that there's more lighting that is needed, so that's something that we're working with the nutrition to. Just get more lighting all around the building, especially in the areas where even if it's not an entrance, we just wanna lit and nobody lighting around there and you can.
This looks really awesome, I'm really glad, and.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thanks for having me, and I'll be, uh, I'll share more information, I, I think there's a, for the members, customer who and. We'll just, we'll share our information and if anything comes up, any other questions, feel free to reach out. Absolutely.
So what's your email, it's written down?
Uh, in. Iowa, so we run a construction company too, so that kind of do help this is.
Okay.
J O L, uh, Winata Iowa dot com, which is a site for our website.
Okay.
That's quite the property construction in one place. You had a minute, in town sometime will take you over our, our renovation project we have been working on for a year.
Yeah, certainly, I'll reach her, I'll reach out here in the next couple of weeks.
Is there any other questions for Joel, anybody? Good, thanks Joel.
Thank you.
Good, we're on. You?
Well, all right. Well, I'm back, um, last month we talked about expanding our projects and, uh, into, I don't know what the scope of it was going to be. What I've brought tonight, the agreement for engineering services for design bidding, construction phase, um, service and then, uh, general construction of the words here. Part of the time when they're doing the work is to just make sure they're. Not trying to cheat, you know, and, you know, cut corners, I have to, thank you. Um, what we're proposing here is basically to do work on Race Street, like we talked about last time, and then we're going to try to fit as much of the work on Main Street that we can with budget that we have with the grants. And we'll kind of set up any of the projects so that city will kind of pick and choose based on how much comes in, how much should they do on that part, so.
Do, do we have anything, is the light bearing anything on that side of the road, you know?
Yeah, that should be. Yes, those are the questions, um. We'll be looking at, trying to get going on this fairly quickly, get out the bids and try to get it constructed this year.
So you sent out all the bids or requests for bids, or does the city have to do anything or?
Um, clearly what the city would really have to do, we will put, put the notice, Iowa Law used to be yet to publish the newspaper, we do bidding. Nobody looks at the newspapers anymore, so that's all online now, and you can take care of that. Um, there'll be a public hearing that will have to happen, the, the process, but I'll give all of that to you guys to get published and. It was pretty standard, so.
You need this agreement signed tonight then?
I don't need it signed tonight, just for the.
Which, yeah, I just want a chance to read through it real quick. We emailing it back to you or?
That's mine, definitely, yep.
Okay. Are we gonna touch on the baffle curtain then, or the waste?
Yeah, um. I got a quote for the curtain material itself from ACI. Who has done all the curtains out there, uh, this is for the heavier duty version, uh, the total amount of the quote is seventeen thousand and ten dollars. Um, I guess what I look for tonight is council approve up to that amount, they've, they've got some stuff in here that I think we could probably work with Dale on and get for. A lot cheaper, like, there are some ridles that are. Um, seven hundred bucks, I think, that we could probably find for, you know, maybe a hundred bucks total or something. They've marked up some of the stuff they're providing quite a bit that I think eaten by. Lowerly for a lot less money, but. What was that season, if I didn't?
Yeah, I guess we need to look at our budget, we have in the budget for that. I would, I would want to look at the budget real quick. See, you know, we have the budget or anything in that department, you know?
Well, the baffle curtain is the one that we're getting some funding from insurance.
Which, right, I contacted insurance.
Okay.
Carrier, and they're ready to cut your check for ten thousand.
And then I think we still had some money in the ARPA.
Yeah.
That we were choosing between the storm sewer project or the baffle curtain, but if we can, I think it was running about fifty nine thousand. In that area, we had a useful bit already for the mapping system that we just.
Yeah, which that was like. Hardly anything for that, so.
Yeah.
Most of it.
So there, there is the, still some funding in the ARPA funds, um, that was waiting for the decision between the baffle curtain and the storm sewer project. So I guess it'll depend on probably the quotes and stuff that come in. On the storm sewer when you get bids.
Is that how you wanted to do it, just wait, wait till we get the storm sewer project bid out?
That's up to you though. For the baffle curtain, between baffle curtain and storm sewer, we also have to look at that budget, because I don't think there's gonna be enough to fund both of them. But I think that's two ARPA, so my, one for the storm sewer is from the county. That's where we're getting the things out.
Yeah, no, I'll have to back it.
Those are two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, there's fifty county that.
That's for the storm sewer.
The other ones?
So the other one is.
Sixty, sixty.
Yeah, for the baffle curtain then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I think we're okay.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll go look into it for sure. I'd say go ahead with it.
So you, you need to just commit to that seventeen ten?
Um, whatever. It's, there's no rush, I don't think, on this, we're just hoping to get it approved so that they can get it installed when the lagoons ice kind of melts off and. And get it lined up, but. If you wait too long, there could be, you know, it could be the equipment increase price, I don't know if that would happen before, usually they change prices in June or something like that, but.
So seventeen thousand, that's just for the curtain?
That's just for the material.
There's material.
And then for installation, you got a quote from Budra. Who did the last one, and their quote for installation, including getting rid of the old. Yeah, torn curtain and.
Nine thousand, so this is thirty.
Right?
What's that?
You said on the E S A one, you thought you could get some of the parts cheaper than what's actually in the.
Yeah. So I was kind of hoping maybe the council would operate up to that amount and then Dale, I can see if we can find some cheaper materials and then we could just straight those off. Well, I don't think they're gonna have a problem with that part.
I think the nature is, I mean, the, our grand, we haven't, we should cover that, sunny. Oh.
So what do you need from us, Mr. Mayor? Yeah. I'd like you to approve, to approve this seventeen thousand, ten dollars. No more than that.
Quote, right, quote.
All in favor to approve the quote for seventeen thousand, ten dollars for the curtain material? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I just have it.
And then you want to do a separate one for installation approval?
Was that the one?
That's the ninety seven thirty.
Yeah.
Do it all at one point.
I make a motion for the ninety seven thirty.
Second. All in favor for the approval of nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. For labor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I just have it.
All right, so for the stormwater projects, just hold off until you get a, have a chance to look at that. Is that kind of what you're thinking? Okay, yeah, all right. Thanks, man.
Next, moving on to the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Referee, I go with Tom. Um, yes, we approve this and like, like.
Just talk all today.
Uh, move to please consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor for the.
And this is the roll call, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Bray, yes. Mackey.
Yep.
Harper?
Yes.
Backer?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
All right, moving on to departments. Uh, water, both Dale's down there. Of each program, the road, you wanna do, uh, do library real quick, do library real quick.
Uh, so January, and then the really cold days, um, our door count was a hundred and ninety one. And we had, um, four hundred and eighty checkouts, two hundred and forty six in library and bridges worth two hundred and thirty four. Um, we continue having, um, programs, we have, uh, we've been having a Medicare seminar, um, once every month or every two months. And we've had a lot of people very happy and interested in that. Um, March twenty sixth, we meet with the state librarian, Mary Ann, and you're going to begin working on our five year strategic plan, which we need to do every five years to be accredited. And, um, we're also kind of.
And, um, we're also gonna talk to her about, um, possibly seeing if we would, um. Could raise the allowance from Elkhart because that hasn't been raised for several years and see what. What all needs to be done legally to do that. Um, right now, I think they give us nineteen hundred a year, but we know they've added more. Uh, people to their city and we're getting more and more Elkhart people here, which is a great thing. Um, we're also beginning planning on our big Easter egg hunt. Which will be on, um, April eighth and that's also a huge event for our libraries, we're starting plans for that. And, um. Have also, um. Worked on the budget and, um, we approved that to die. At the, we.
Tonight you did.
Yes. So. Things are going very well, very happy with everything happening. Um, the Easter egg hunt, uh, will be from ten o'clock, it's usually about hour and a half, but ten to noon. We'll start it, oh, yeah, guys, see you in breakfast.
Is it at the school?
Yes, it'll be at the school.
I love that Easter.
I hear you're gonna be the Easter buddy here. Yeah, we know a person we can nominate for the Easter buddy, big grumpy bunny. Any further discussion for library? Move on to the fire department, see it's not on there, but we need to set that on there.
We'll put that on next.
And police.
And police.
Since last meeting, I guess, uh, the fire marshal up there, uh, went through that with them. Uh, got reported, he's been working on that kind of stuff. Um, I think we're sitting like fifteen, right around fifteen calls for the years apart. Um, we had three or four the other day and. They, uh. Added one new member. It's.
Yes.
Yes, he lives up here on the corner of, uh, fourth and water. Uh, and, uh, met with, uh, township trustees. Monday night, us. Wednesday night, something like that, uh, and. Talked to them about budget stuff, uh, we discussed, you know, uh. The radio power fees, um, how some of things have gone up in prices and that our budget really hasn't gone up. Uh, they're looking for a number for me, so once we sit down, uh, for the budget. Uh, whatever the town come up with, uh, then we will, uh. Present them with what we're expecting their hat to be, or less, and they're will, willing to definitely have it, so.
Have you guys set a budget date? Like when you're gonna work on budget yet or?
What's that?
Have you set a budget date over there yet?
For us?
Yeah.
That's how this will be worked out.
Okay, okay.
But that is things, don't forget.
Is there any more discussion for fire department map? No? Moving on, wanna do Waterdale? Water and roads, I guess.
How much has happened, I haven't heard anything out of the roads guy, you had to probably go for a while, so. Lagoon, we very much covered, water's doing good, so. Things, I'm still, still working on the. Man, service line report, which I have. Another year to get it done, but we're getting there, so ours isn't bad.
What is, what is, what is the training that you?
March first and second, I'll be going.
Do we have anybody on backup for you on those days?
I'll talk today and see if.
Is there any other discussion for water roads? Great, thanks Dale. Moving on to cemetery parks. Been scratch library off that one now. Are you gonna do it? Are you gonna do it?
Yeah, alright, had a pretty, uh, pretty intense meeting last Thursday. Got our board formed, we have a plus one situation, whoo, I didn't see that one coming. Um. Got a secretary assigned. People are a little reluctant to step up to the plate and be a chair or vice chair. So I think what we're gonna end up doing is using co-chairs. But nobody's committed to that yet, we have a work session coming up the twenty third from. Eight, uh, six thirty to seven thirty, that'll be up here. You'll get, we'll take care of it, don't worry. So, no actionable decisions were made, the prioritize prioritization of some tasks. Per the mayor's guidance was taken, but it's, that's my, all. As far as familiarity, just going through all real projects that know the potential.
That was a lot. It was a lot on there.
Did you say there was a new that showed up for the meeting?
Uh, plus one.
So can you send that to me to add to the list you had originally given me, please?
I already did.
Well, but I've got a plus one.
Chair of six people? Yeah, don't worry about it, I'll send it again. Probably do it right now. It's pretty exciting, uh, I think there's a lot of really good ideas, some directions and some focus that. Hadn't brought up before, so. Should be a fun group of people to work with.
Alright, is there any other discussion for cemetery parks? Moving on to finance, economic development.
So we have a story on the economic round group meeting Wednesday at ten AM. So I'll go to that and see what. Before that's that, that's the group that we get, that we've got a grant for the. We're gonna use it for the sign, that electronic sign for thirty five hundred. I think they're getting, they're gonna give out larger grants this year. So is this Wednesday? At ten.
What are the parameters of those grants?
I think, Mina, what can the baby use for? I have to look again, uh, do you want me to just send you?
Thanks.
Alright, is there any other discussion for finances and economic development?
Tager, do you know what the limits are on the credit cards? Lauren called on her card and so we know what that was, but are they all?
Everybody is five thousand.
Okay.
And I set up our account to be able to go up to fifty thousand total.
Okay.
So when we add more cards, we're already, we have that ability.
Okay.
So then we wouldn't have to reach out to the underwriters again, so, but each card right now is set at five thousand dollars.
So we order something on those or use them, where's it get shipped to?
Here, yeah.
It'll all come here.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's the billing address.
All three parts are here.
Our is the billing addresses here, if like Dale orders something and wants it to the shop, like when you order online, you just put the shop. The shipping address and. And then billing.
Did you put, uh, shipping address and mailing address so that the mailing address comes to the PO box?
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Of course, yes.
Alright, moving on to communications.
Nothing's a part.
All good. Moving on to discussion items, city code update, state code.
I think we wanna wait until we get the official code all together before we start working on that, work with the attorney on that.
Is that, is that a? Is that a high priority item?
Yes.
For his.
Yeah, we got a lot to it. It needs to be updated.
Did you seem overwhelmed at the amount of that that we have going on?
Uh, we don't have dumpster fires, there's apparently a couple other places that are having some dumpster fires, so.
Yeah, he didn't feel like it was a big deal.
Huh?
He didn't feel like a funny deal, he just.
It's just something to do.
Okay.
Right on. I'm glad he has that kind of attitude.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
He might have been here tonight, but he has another city.
He'll be here next month.
He'll be here next month.
Be here next month.
Cool. Before the meeting.
Hey, moving on, budget work session, February twentieth. We have our time on that.
We didn't, that's why I was. See, we moved it up to the, to six thirty.
Is that what I put out?
Thanks for the. Put anything on there for a time, but we moved up the last one to six thirty, so I wanted to wait to make sure it was okay for six thirty again.
Mike said it in the form. Uh, three hours.
He's good.
You've never been to one of these.
I have.
Oh, you have?
I have.
Well, then you know that three hours is.
But that was after the pep talk last.
Perhaps. Mr. Mary, just cause I spotted three hours for a meeting, doesn't give me how to use all three.
Thank you.
Three hours versus a week in Ames, I'd take three hours. Yeah, Ames is four days for five hours just for budget, so I would, uh. Take our three hours.
I'm glad we have money to talk about.
Alright, any other discussion for budget work session? Moving on to.
Did, did, what? Are we following a similar format, I mean. Is there a format, I mean, what, what can we expect or?
Yeah, are you guys able to kind of, I know Riley and I mentioned it last time, you know, a couple years so we can see patterns. Yes, that's, that's how the worksheets come out, it was the previous years. Um, I don't know if you guys have heard, but with the rollbacks, um, that came out, they're looking at extending our budgets to do not till the end of April.
Okay.
Um, so if that happens, that gives us a little more time, but, uh, Maxine and I met on Sunday. Um, pulled up worksheets and looked at figures, um. And now with our, um. Oh my gosh, my brain just went dead for a second. Um. With our, um, general budget now back up in, with changing our TIF. It's gonna help a lot with putting figures in in some areas, um, we pulled up, I ran a budget worksheet through December. And. We're gonna have to definitely do some amending, cause we've gone over a lot of our budgets and we're not even. Close to end of June yet, so.
Go ahead. Um, will these reports look similar to what the old ones did or?
Yeah, it's, it's, it comes off of the, um, Department of Management website, so it's the same report you've always received.
So the software that we purchased. Next year, when you do this, everything will look different?
It should.
Okay.
Next year, we should be able to just pull them reports right in, set them down right beside the worksheets. So I'm supposed to tomorrow have my order. Uh, first meeting with the utilities and software upgrade program tomorrow morning.
Right on, thank you, sorry, sir. When will that worksheet be available?
I'm sorry, what?
When will the worksheet be available? The night of the twentieth, or can I get a copy of ours for prior?
Do you just need what the fire department has had in the past?
Yeah, it's, I did, what?
I probably already have them, if you wanna stop in tomorrow or something, then I can show you what they.
If I know which line I didn't want to. Need to raise.
For you guys?
Yes, you want us to present again like I presented last year, is there a certain date or? Have you wanted to do that?
You gonna do a dance?
I could.
And I don't know, Lori, Lori and I spoke a little bit about the copier that she had currently has, and she was gonna look into it. She thought that we, she had to have it through April?
I think we're, I think April first is it.
April first.
And so I'm going to be emailing them again saying, it's right now. I think we get it for a dollar if we decide to keep it. Um, otherwise, it's, I think, five hundred to send it back. So the board decided to see, have me call again and see if that's true, maybe we're gonna keep ours. Since we've been paying for it for five years, to keep it for a dollar, but then we wanna be paying the maintenance fee every month.
So when it breaks down?
Then we have to buy a new computer.
Or get it fixed.
Yeah, okay.
But you can go to state and get one. For five hundred or?
So do you order like toner and stuff from them?
We already have on the toner, they sent it this last year.
So you have backup toner already and?
We never even replace the toner, so they've got it.
Tough problem to have these days.
I'll send some of my copies over to you.
No, cause they cost a lot right now. Overturned us.
So on the, on the tax levy hearing, I put that in there.
Everybody, their W twos.
Yeah. You don't get a W two. Those are, have to be out by, um, February, but all you have to do is go ahead and report. What you received.
I bet everybody had to pick up the W two or something.
No, no, the W sevens were. Um, for some of the other ones, but you're, you're.
Yeah, you fill out the ten ninety nine with the mention.
Yeah, I'll get ready on that one. But I had put on here December sixth for the tax levy hearing dates because I had to get a date in, cause I have to get that published.
March sixth.
Well, March sixth worked for everyone.
What does that mean?
We, so we have to set a hearing date for the ta, maximum tax levy.
So you wanna meet on March sixth?
And, cause we have to have it in after published, no sooner than ten and no later than twenty days. Before the hearing, so we need to get that in in order for us to work on our budget.
Monday, there's six, four, nine.
Six thirty, nine thirty?
Six thirty.
I'm not going later.
Will six thirty work for everyone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are you sending an email?
Any, uh, further description?
What is, what is that called, Jeff, I mean, Jeff, oh my god, somebody.
You're lucky you're not sitting next to her.
So often, is your resolution is setting the public hearing from the maximum proposed property tax levy rate for fiscal year twenty twenty four?
That's too much.
Tax levy. It's on your agenda, you have a copy of it over there in front of you.
Tax levy proposal?
There you go.
Thank you.
Alright, is there any further discussion on your tax levy hearing? Moving on to Opera House. Um, all I can say is they picked up a couple more dishwashers today and return them, to get some. Get two more that we already purchased that fit under the counters. Um, as of right now, Tom is looking into, um, the contract and. The bonds.
Pay everybody's.
Yep, uh, he's gonna get back to us tomorrow, like, fine, tomorrow afternoon. That's all I have on that.
It's like hourly fees. I know.
So if there's something on my list of claims. That I don't want to be on there. What do you do about that, Kevin?
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, well.
This program.
Yeah.
What's on here instead?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you have more discussions like to have about it, I mean, I think you're, you're able to do that. Obviously, we do that here on this. I don't think you can. You can't take back the act of it as part of the period of the tenure.
Good.
So now that being said.
I put that.
Counsel is going to take a consensus with counsel. Whether you should bring a particular thing back for your discussion. I think you can get around it.
Okay.
You didn't publish it. You published the package.
Yeah, um, no.
No.
Just in general.
Right now, you guys don't want to know what the plans are.
Yeah.
I can't see it when it was. It's not really the right thing to do, but.
Okay.
We take a look at when.
So can they bring it back for discussion now?
Potentially, yeah, they can discuss it openly under comments. Mayor, mayor wants to go out and actually play it, take a census of council with very much. Whether they'd like to follow through that or not. Get the actual vote.
Right.
If you can ask for direction in council.
So we haven't been making payments on the Opera House. But we have an F V H designed fee, which is our. Our agent here. But we haven't been there for three months. So I guess I don't know why we're paying. Or whatever, whatever say that. Josie, do you have anything?
No.
You good?
You just brought the question to speed, Paul. No, well, I mean, you know, we get it. We're taking complaints in certain areas.
Yeah.
And we did take a complaint on a particular person in town.
Okay.
And we did, they did rectify that, hopefully.
Okay.
They plan on doing that. Specifically, the person who's moving, twenty five over the span. Let me start. I am right outside of town, big driver that way. We got a certain complaint.
You have no idea how happy that lady is. Just terrible.
Did you get any complaints on your free dogs that move anywhere?
Haven't heard anything.
But they, they.
Where are they going? Behind us, I don't know. They're beautiful.
But they're wild things. I can try to.
Designer.
And then.
They live right behind us, I don't know.
Okay.
Do they have a fenced in yard? Do they have a, I said each other.
Eighty five.
They're big, they're like.
Ron, can you get my calendar in, man?
Yeah.
Okay.
I get the last one. I don't know if I got the one you just got.
I have enough.
Just send it. Fuck, give it a chance.
I don't believe I'm running. Mary, it's a thing, it's a group.
Right now.
Yeah, that's true.
But maybe she's already got hers. She's actually excited. Oh, wow, no, we need to play hard.
So the discussion on this is there's three different villains on here. On this invoice for the month of January.
You said he has to out count and we'll open it back up for discussion.
Um.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you're still under C, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that's what figures for me, which they have, if they have a. You know, if they have a man or a payment or if you give any invoice, you can certainly discuss it.
Okay.
Okay. We are sure we received on the offer house.
So I guess with that, that's for the whole month of January, the billing of January. But nobody over there for January. Or February.
Doesn't say where it's for us.
This is for F V H, not King Construction, so.
But like, does it say what services?
Where the design.
Do they, are they doing?
Are they handling your, is your, their? Um, pay ass, working together, pay apps and stuff, are they handling that?
But this has like.
Like thirteen and a half hours, fourteen and a half hours.
Also structural designer one.
Could be in like.
Project manager two.
Somebody from their organization to our meeting in March and say.
Explain.
As builds together. As builds, like the final product, if it's gonna be the final, what actually got. Put in there, how it was put in there, that kind of thing. Consider your industry for right. Right. Yeah, Matt's got a very small point to compete, they're dark on site. By the, yeah, it doesn't mean that they're actually physically there, but you're certainly asked for an itemized. Yeah.
About everything over there is done, so I don't know what else there.
They're speaking money. Stick whether they're in there or not.
Yeah.
Manager two. That could be like a lot of permits or whatever, finalizing that stuff.
So this asks where an itemized.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. You already know.
Yeah. You think they're charging us because we want the payoffs separated for the apartments upstairs and then.
Could be.
But then they know that at the beginning, they did, but they can still charge us to separate, I guess, since they haven't been doing it. Because they have two different grants on that building. Are we need.
Is that F V H that does that or King Construction that does that?
F V H, okay.
They'll bill you a lot like a, like an attorney. Phone call, things like that, more time they got to put in to do it stuff.
Well, as long as we're getting stuff done.
Right.
Okay with that.
So maybe we should ask for it.
Okay. Is that good with everybody?
That's good.
Maybe we'll see if they'll come back to you.
Yeah. Sure. For him to go.
Where do you go to project completion, I think they want to come and lay it off and go on.
You would think.
Or is there any other one? Any further discussion to the Opera House?
Well, let's do it.
Moving on, mayor, council comments?
I do have a comment. All right, so nine one one, Matt kind of spoke on this a little bit, nine one one board met last week, and we went over our budget. For that, and so the big thing that Matt did speak on is that to make the nine one one board. Sustainable going forward is that cities are gonna have to start picking up radio fees. Um, so this year, they, we pay out of this, each radio is thirty three ninety three. And in the past, they picked up fifty percent of the fees. This year, they've dropped it down already to forty percent. And told us to expect at least ten percent every year going forward. So that in about the four or five years, the nine one one board will not be paying any of the subscriber fees for the radios over the, oh, on the cities.
That wasn't voted for, right? They're still gonna give fifty percent this year.
Yeah, it's forty percent this year.
How many radios are we talking on? Forty five. Woo hoo. Let's buy a truck.
At what, what was the cost?
Thirty, so.
It's thirty three ninety three.
Thirty, thirty radars.
And we now have to pay sixty percent of that. Thirty three dollars and ninety three cents for each radio.
Each radio. And you have how many radios?
No, eight per year.
A year?
Yeah. So you know, that's what they're hoping by doing it slowly is it doesn't impact the smaller cities as much, but I mean. In our budget, the nine one one board, it saved forty thousand dollars on year one, so. You know, they want to make it sustainable, so, because for Slater, or for everybody. But a new tower was put in Slater. And so they want to be able to keep funding those projects, so that's where this.
So elaborate a little bit on that, so there was a bunch of chiefs that went to that meeting and spoke their mind because.
Yes.
Kind of a bunch of crap that we are paying that amount of. That tower that went into Slater, I'd be really mad, though, it's gonna be an excuse. If we hadn't paid for it, or they're saying that we had to pay for it. To say, okay, we drop or we're dropping that percentage, I don't pay for that, because Ray Cox said that they would pay for that tower. This is the one built anywhere close to what it was supposed to be built to. I mean, it, it's.
Why?
Engineering, I guess, I don't know. It, it. It didn't work properly, still having issues in Southern. West, Southwest, Story County, as far as paging. Uh, is there any way we could get the dynamo on board to? Look, get it working right, and then, once you get it working right, so there are your incremental change. At this point, we don't get a say. Oh, we didn't get a say from the get go that we. Which company we should have lived with. Why we live with it? I mean, they gave us pages that we didn't want. I mean, we don't get a say. They're, they're making their mind up to where, where do they want to be.
Yeah, it seems. More of a courtesy, I mean, the sheriff's office. Had this plan in place, and obviously I've been to two meetings, so it was before, um. That stuff, but it's kind of.
It's one.
This is how it is. And there was, there was a couple people that really spoke up their points about how much it would hurt their fire departments and such.
Certainly the heartburn, you're feeling how. Like so, and the Cambridge mayor, a few mayors bill. Raise a pretty big stake over there, over that.
It's got to match, to match point.
It didn't.
Okay.
You got the system, but they were out there, they wanted.
Good.
So, but yeah, about twenty percent every year, we're gonna have to pick up, so.
I've got a phone call in to. Um, break on, on how we would deactivate. And radios. Not really what we, we got twenty five to make. So that each personnel can have one on fire scene or in a disaster situation, but if we can't afford to pay the tower fees. I mean, the big thing is like, what's Kelly gonna do? Kelly doesn't have that kind of funding. Ten thousand dollars on my budget. So. Looking wasted, maybe come back. So it's a way to go, I guess, we were doing. The increase was, I want to say like. And was it that high, ten percent?
I think that sounds right.
That's where you're going, increasing those tower fees.
What do we pay?
I don't know.
It's thirty.
They're just trying to take so.
Sixteen.
That.
Sixteen.
A lot like.
Because they covered fifty, so I have to give it next. Yeah, this year, pretty much until we cover it, within five years. They will not contribute at all to subscriber fees.
Did they say how many years that would be?
Ten percent every year, so we got four years. Next year, they'll only cover thirty percent. So, at, at least they could come back. Their plan is ten percent each year, but.
Is this?
Depending on where the world looks next year, they could come back and say, oh, no, it needs to be fifteen percent this year, twenty percent more this year.
They ain't gonna go the other way up here.
So. No, I'm saying like, take the, yeah. So, but their plan is to try to only do ten percent each year, so that gives us about five years, four or five years. And then we'll be expected to pay all the cost.
I can tell you, if you look at it, I'm buying one more, sure, just money amongst the county. Um, where that goes, you not give out any important, I can tell you that. Yeah, I can. But we don't see it. So. Very quickly, ready, all that money goes out for.
There was, and the, the budget meeting was a little, I don't want to say heated, but they did.
Development in the room.
It's kind of, I mean, there are certain things they're doing, they are trying to make things safer in our community, but they're giving four thousand dollars. Um, for each of the dispatch centers in Story County to send a dispatcher to training. So that's twelve thousand dollars, that's coming out of the budget to send dispatchers to training. Uh. So just certain things like that, that they are trying to send more people to training, but it's coming out of. The board. So.
Something to keep our eyes on.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a couple of comments unrelated to that?
Absolutely.
Is there any way that we could move in the future? Our department reports. Earlier in the agenda to honor and respect our board, uh, chairs' time. So that they can get their say done and they can get the heck out if they've got things that they want to get done that evening. Where would you like to put it? How about?
After the presentations?
Say after public comment.
Yeah, I would say right after public comment.
I think you want to do your presentations before.
Yeah.
Well, exceeded.
Department, and yeah, so like.
People come to.
I guess, so when there's no presentation, then you have to public comment, when there are presentations, presentations will take precedent, and then, uh. The reports, and then.
Very good suggestion.
Yeah, well. Generally, most staff has a reason to be there, they have something specific to report. You know, require it. Stay home much keeping. Um, reality is, if you try them earlier, especially if there's something on the agenda that affects their department, they're gonna stay anyway. The other was a point of order with regards to. Comments from the audience after that open feature for public comment. Um, just making it known to people. Those, those comments are unnecessary, are more, and they add a lot of time to some of our meetings.
Yeah, I'm on board with, uh, and forcing further boundaries around that.
Yeah, and making an announcement, like public comments close. Yeah, there is no more talking.
Setting a boundary and enforce, yeah.
Yes, inevitably.
One thing you can guarantee with public content, it has to be something not on the agenda. It's on the agenda. But no. If it's, if they want to come, they want to talk, or debate about something, keep in mind, you receive and file and not comment back. So we didn't go back and work.
Listen.
Say thank you, that's that. But one of the things that we, we compared is a, a nonstop litigating comments from certain people. Throughout the agenda.
Well.
The mayor has the power to find them on any one.
And we, we do have, we even have a history of kind of enabling that pattern to.
Yeah, talk back.
You can certainly, the mayor says, you get three minutes and scream it. About five minutes, five minutes. You can certainly stop it. Say, God, bye. That is not mean that they get an opportunity to want the next subject, I mean, three minutes to stand up, speak, to get out.
Yeah, I think that's important, especially like the special meeting we had, there should have been no public comment, and we constantly got interrupted, and so.
Just.
Right.
Right.
Right. They kept talking over us as, uh, council.
So I think we should make it, was that, or is that how that works, is the error of the mayor?
Do you really?
To labor ask them not to comment anything.
The mayor. I'm just gonna figure out, you know. Make it know they go. Their, their time's up. Likely if you can't even talk, I don't know about her, if they continue to talk.
I don't know.
Ask you. But, but yeah, you control the meeting, you can ask people to step outside, or you just ask them simply, can you stay? So after the meeting, can you?
So after the meeting, if like that, maybe conversation. Something along those lines, but you know, keep media on track. But yeah, if you decide it's gonna be something that's a very heated debate, you got forty people in here. You don't wanna hear everybody agree this.
I don't know. Because. How confused that make you, Dale? Here your parents are adventurous, then. I thought somebody was behind me.
The biggest problem with the public comment, the not getting sucked in to where. Their comment, no.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta stop that.
We get, we get lots of side guards.
I am, I understand and completely respect it for Bart's coming from, I was merely suggesting for the purpose of. Honoring and respecting their time. It's sometimes.
But I think if we keep our meetings like, no talking, like. In a way, let's just get through it, starting on.
I can get my head wrapped around that, basically.
Right, I think it went pretty fast.
That's a lot.
You said about support, I mean, what you got there actually, I mean, like tonight with slicker. As much as you want a banana.
That that your agenda format has been helpful.
Extraordinarily helpful. And so as long as I'm making these stands of comment, I wanted to. Make it a a record comment that I believe Sue is doing spectacular job.
Yeah.
So I know that it gets annoying and I know that I, for one, will be a large in any backside.
Why? No.
Good job.
Yes, good job.
Sorry, I didn't read, I spent a lot of time and. And we've got a lot of things going on that. It's amazing. Thank you. I'm emotionally adjourned.
I second that. All in favor to adjourn, say aye. All of the things you made.